We're live. Hello, everyone, and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I am Coach Ashley, joined today by the entire Get Oiling team. Guys, come out and say hello.
Hey, everyone. We're glad you're here today.
Hi, everybody. I'm happy that we're, that you are all here as well.
Fabulous. Yeah, we are super excited to have you here today, Kim, if you're able to come out. I think it looks like we just lost Kim. I hope she comes back. We love you, Kim. Today, you guys, is going to be an extension of what we have been going over for the past couple of weeks. We have been talking about how you can take your events online, how you can take those online events and turn them into automated sharing funnels, where you've recorded yourself. Of course, if this is your first time tuning in, take a deep breath. We've got all of that sort of catching up available for you. But today, we're talking about something that you can use, whether you've built an online event like we've been teaching, or if you're just going to do an event generally, right? If you're going to have one in your local market, or do events just the same way that you would normally be doing. This works for trade shows, all that kind of good stuff. We're really going to be solving the problem today of getting people to actually show up and to want to come and to want to bring friends. So that is the plan for today. As you guys are coming in, we've got a good crowd today. Come and say hello. Let us know where you're coming in from. If you have any questions for us, you can definitely start placing those into the chat, or even more ideally, if you're here with us live, into the Q and A box. So I've got some slides prepared, and we are going to go through those. But I want to also, for those of you who are here live, I want to draw your attention briefly to your inbox, because we did just send you a special little bonus. I created a little worksheet for you guys, a checklist that you can print off and use as you are planning and promoting your event, just like we have with the last two weeks of trainings. So let's come over to the chat. Do we have people? I know I'm seeing it light up over here. I'm just not seeing the chat itself on my screen.
We've got someone from Germany here today. That's pretty cool.
Fantastic.
Outside our usual scope, so yeah.
Good evening, Germany.
Hello to Maggie, Glenn, and Felicitas, and Diane. And yeah, we're glad you're all here.
Fantastic. All right. Good to see you guys. If you are brand new, if you've never been to one of these before, if this is your first time seeing this live or as a replay, this is the Get Growing Weekly Work Session. We provide this training every single week for you as a live opportunity for our community to get help from us and for you, anyone, whether you're a part of the Get Oil and Community or not, to come and learn a little something that can help you grow your Young Living businesses. They're totally free to anyone growing a business with Young Living. So without further ado, I'm going to head over to my slides and show you guys a brief training. And then we're going to go over the worksheet that has been created and sent to you guys. And of course, those of you who watch this as a recording, don't worry, we'll show you where you can get this. And yeah, we'll go from there. All right. So today, we're going to talk about how to promote your events. Super fun stuff, right? So first, if you want one-on-one help with your, with your funnels, with anything, really, it says anything goes. If you need help and you're here live, your questions do not have to be topic, training of the day specific. So definitely go ahead and raise your hand if you need some one-on-one help. And type your questions into that Q and A box. I've got notifications going off over here on the iPad. I'm going to go ahead and make this guy super quiet. Okay. All right. So type those questions in the Q and A so that we can get to you at Q and A time. All right. So first, I've got a poll for you guys. Have you, who here today, who have you, who among you have gone ahead and created an online event in Get Oiling, following the training over the last couple of weeks? I know I've seen some familiar faces here, and I have worked with some of you guys, and some of you have even come out. Just quick show of hands, have you created your online event? This could be in funnel form, right? This could also be in just, you know, having the events manager page created. Fabulous. All right. So let's talk about the elephant in the room here, as it were. Why people don't show up to events. This is a huge headache, right, for a lot of us. The number one reason why, I'll get to here in just a second, but this is one of the more important reasons. First, they don't take the opportunity seriously. Now, what this means is, is that they don't understand the value of the information that they are going to receive. They don't take the opportunity seriously often, because we present ourselves when we're sharing as passive, or as hobbyist, or in some way that is just not quite serious enough for them to see the information that you're going to share as something that could actually change their life, right? So if somebody invited you to something and they were kind of passive about it, you wouldn't think of it as being life-changing information, right? You would think about it as being something kind of optional. Well, that's one of the problems that we create for ourselves when we're sharing, if we don't share correctly. And we are going to learn how to fix all of these problems today. The second thing is, they don't understand what's in it for them, right? So you're going to give a 101 class on essential oils. Well, unless they are actively engaged in trying to learn about essential oils, which if they're not a Young Living distributor, it's a high chance they're probably not looking for that right now. They don't understand what's in it for them. Why would I want to go and spend an hour or more, or 45 minutes, or whatever the amount of time is, out of my day? Why? If they can't have that question answered, they aren't going to show up reliably, right? All right, here's the big one. Here is such a big one, you guys, especially if you're sharing online. They think they already know what you're going to share, and they think they have their mind made up already. If we are out there and really just speaking the Young Living language everywhere, right? We're talking seed to seal, we're talking product lines, we're promoting, promoting, promoting. We're not speaking our prospects' language. We are not reaching the people that we need to reach, because we're not coming at them in their own language. They think that, oh, well, that's just that thing that my neighbor down the street does, and she's kind of weird, and I don't really think I want to do that, right? People think they have their mind made up, because they think they already know what you're going to do because of what you've already shared. A lot of times, when we go to share in this business, we can kind of wind up with our foot in our mouth. And what we want to do is make sure that we have set people up with enough curiosity and with enough context so that they want to come, because they know there's something that they don't know, that they need to know, that you can show them, all right? And then finally, and this is important too, they might not even have a clue that it's happening. A lot of us will post things online or send something via email and think that it's actually going to reach everyone with that one effort that we've made, when in fact, we need to touch from multiple angles and do a little bit more manual footwork to actually get this thing done. So I don't want to scare you off from, from the work of this. It is, it's not that it's hard work. It can be, but it can pay off for you big time if it's smart work. And today, we're going to talk about how you can do smart work in promoting your events. And of course, this is following along with the trainings that we have done in the previous two work sessions. But this can apply to you no matter how your event is currently set up, if it's online, offline, what have you. All right. So first, if we want to get better at promoting our events, we need to consider our mindset, okay? And our mindset around promoting is this. First, we need to understand who this information helps. Specifically, who are you helping with the information that you have, right? Who are you helping? What problems, in their words, will this solve for them, right? What problems will be solved by learning the information you're going to share at your event? This is going to inform the way we talk about the event. Because if we're just saying, I'm going to do a class on Kidsense, which is what I've been using as an example for the past couple of weeks, people who don't know Young Living and don't know the Kidsense line have no idea what that means. They don't care, because they don't understand what's in it for them. They don't understand how it will solve a problem for them, right? So we need to get really clear. Who is this for? What problem will it solve for them? And even going a step up from there, what's the bigger problem that they're facing? Because typically, when we have an event, right, if we're going to give a class, we're going to focus on solving a problem that is more immediately solvable, right? Something that it's actionable, that can provide a win and make somebody go, yes, okay, I need that kit. I need to get started. I'm ready to make a change, right? But what's the bigger problem? That this is sort of a branch off of, right? What's the bigger problem that's waking this person up at 3:00 in the morning, right? What's the problem they're losing sleep over and stressing out over? And how does it relate to the problem you're going to solve in this class, right? We really do have to do this mind work first, so that we can place what we're sharing in the context of something that truly and immediately matters to the person that you really want to share with. All right. Now, we also need to ask ourselves, what other problems, what peripheral problems might this person also be struggling with? They can be directly connected to the big problem or the problems you'll be solving in the class. But we also just kind of need to understand what the person we want to help is dealing with, right? Because they need to know that we get them. They need to know that we aren't just here to try to sell them Kidsense, because they're a mom, right? We're here to help them, because we understand the problems that they're facing. How much more likely do you think someone is going to be to say yes to you when you have taken those extra steps to show them that you really get it? You aren't, you weren't just here to peddle a product. You are here to make a lasting improvement in their lives from what you know. All right. And really importantly, guys, consider the angles here, right? Consider the language here, and make it their language, their angle, their point of view, not yours. Remember, where language is concerned, seed to seal means nothing to these folks. Gary, Mary, Young Living, the terminology that is baked into the things that you know as a distributor mean absolutely zero to the people that you are presenting to. Their problems, though, on the other hand, mean everything. And if you can speak to those problems, show them and point them toward a path where those problems can be fixed, especially if we can solve a small problem on the path to a big problem. Oh, boy, are they ever going to love the name Young, right? Are they ever going to want that Essential Rewards program that you're going to sell them about, right? Are they ever going to want to make sure that they are totally set up to ditch and switch? They aren't going to care about any of the minutia that we know with our language until we can speak theirs first. If you learn nothing else from this training, or nothing else ever from, from me, or from, from these work sessions and the history of everything, is that you need to understand where the person you want to help is coming from, so that you can place what you have to offer in the context of the problems they're trying to solve. If you can do that, you can do anything with this, okay? Make sure that the context, the angles that you are approaching this from, and the language that you are, that you are using in your promotions is their language, not your internal Young Living product-specific language, all right? Cool. Now, let's talk about how to promote. We're going to use content to promote, right? And content is really important. Content here is going to be sort of like your breadcrumbs. These are the appetizers before the meal. You're going to create three to five pieces of content that help to solve a related, we'll call it a mini-problem, or a peripheral problem, a connected problem, right? So you aren't going to go out and, you know, teach them how to get their baby to sleep at night. You are going to help them create a calming environment with this diffuser recipe, right? You're not going to give them the whole steak. You're going to give them a bite of an appetizer. That's what this content is about. Now, what is content? A content can be a blog post, which we're going to show you how to use. Content can also be a video, right, which you can embed on a blog post, or you can host it directly on a platform like YouTube or Facebook. You could also use social posts on a platform such as, again, Facebook. Instagram can work for this as well. It's a little more tricky. And then, of course, in any of the content that you create, you want to include a call to action, right? And all call to action is, is do this thing next, right? It's telling them to take a step. If they watch a video, click the link below this video and register for this event, right? Click the link below this video and watch this blog post. They've just read this social post. Click the link here and get registered. Click the link here to read my blog post, right? And on the blog post, click here to get registered. That's what you're doing. You're including a call to action with every piece of content that you create. And every piece of content that you create is going to point to, it's going to solve a simple problem that is related to the bigger problem, right? Because we were talking about the peripheral mini-problems, right? This is the appetizer before the steak. The steak is the live event, right? Or the recorded event, the presentation. The call to action is going to get them to take that next step toward that big thing. It's going to get them to order that next dish, if you will, to keep this dinner metaphor going, right? And then what we're going to do with that content that we create is we're going to syndicate it for one to two weeks. And you could go out a little further if you wanted to, three, you know, three weeks, two, three weeks before the event. Now, what does syndicate mean? It means to share. And I'm going to get into what that can look like for you as we continue here with the training today. So here's the action steps that you're going to take. First, don't be passive, okay? If you build it, they will not come unless you go out and show them that it's there, okay? So you are going to create this stuff, but then you actually need to go out and invite people personally. You create this content, and you go out and share it, and then you actually reach out and you start conversations. You get on the phone, just like you would if you were inviting to share Young Living. This is literally exactly what you're doing. You're inviting to share Young Living. You just have a very specific and beneficial angle around how you are going to share, right? So invite personally. If you post an event page, don't just think that people are going to show up for it just because you posted it, or just because you emailed about it. You need to touch back and touch back, and even make, for people that you know personally, even make that point of reaching out to them personally to get them signed up for the event. Also, and this is really important, and this is something that becomes infinitely possible for you, if you consider the context first, if you do that mindset work first, and you understand how what you're going to be sharing is going to massively and immediately benefit a specific group of people. You can then go out to people in your community, professionals, entities, businesses in your community, online and off, who have a relationship with the audience that you want to serve, whose problems are solved with the information that you're going to share in your event. So think about it this way. To keep the Kidsense example going, which is what we've done in the past couple of trainings, is put together an online event with Kidsense. Is that maybe it is, you know, we're coming up on bug season, coming up on summertime, right? Maybe it's this coming spring, and you're going to have this event locally. You could take the blog posts that you create that talk about diffusers and talk about, you know, the right diffusers to use, the recipes to use, and just peripheral things like that, that are the appetizer and not the steak. You can take those and share them with a pediatrician in your community, maybe even the pediatrician that you use, right? Or holistic practitioners in the area, or daycares, or schools in the area. And you can say, I am hosting a talk on this topic that I believe that the people that you serve would benefit from hearing. Here's the blog post about it. Here's the information about the event. Could you please share this with the people that you know? Guys, you have no idea how powerful it is to be able to do this, and it's not hard to do if we are coming at this not from the perspective of, I sell Young Living products. I'm going to sell them to you in a presentation, but say, I know how to help you solve a problem that's important. Come check this out. And then, of course, if you like what you see, here's how you take the next step with Young Living at the presentation. If we, if we add in just that additional context, you can have sharing partners throughout your community who have great credibility and trust with an audience that you haven't built yet, and you can borrow their audience for yourself, and they can start helping you fill up your events. This is a huge step that is not hard to take if you do the homework first. And then, of course, you need to get out there and initiate conversations. Get on social media, get active in your community, and start talking about those peripheral problems that you have come to understand, because you did that mindset work in the first place. Start these conversations on your social profiles. Start them in and participate in the conversations that are like them in online communities, in offline communities. And then, when an opportunity comes up, and, and you see a space where you can say, hey, I actually have a recipe. It's on my blog. It'll help you to understand how to do this thing, get this benefit, right? I have a blog post about how you can choose the right, there you go, right? And you can share that link then. You can point to this thing that you've created. Because what it is, is essentially, it's, it's a way to help somebody and build trust with them. And it's a buffer between you saying, I have a product I can sell you, because people recoil at that, right? Because when, when you're sitting with someone and they say, oh, well, I've got this problem, and you say, I've got a thing I can sell you to fix that, they're not going to like how that feels. It doesn't quite feel right when I say that, right? But if you say, I've got a thing actually that I've created that I want to give you for free, that's going to help you solve a problem that's related here. And if you really like that, then you're really going to love this next step, which is your event. Quick show of hands. Does that make sense? Not so hard to do if you just take the couple of extra steps to provide the context, all right? So initiate those conversations that can lead to you sharing your content and making the direct invitation to your events. And then, this is really important too, and this is an action that a lot of us don't take. Again, we go through the trouble of, you know, we create an event, we think we're promoting the event, and maybe we do, maybe we post some links to it. But if we aren't reaching out and actually hand-in-hand walking people through the registration process, then we're missing a huge opportunity to actually get real commitment from people. It's very easy for someone to click a button and say that they're doing something, and then they'll never do it, especially if you create your events on Facebook, which I don't personally recommend. Create your events inside of Get Oiling, so that you have a closed loop. And when you're inviting someone, walk them through the process. And there's some additional steps to take there too, that I want to tell you about here in just a second. But maybe just another quick show of hands, how many of you would just put your Young Living, you know, website link out there and just let somebody sign up by themselves? How many of you do that? How many of you think that's a good idea? I hope none of you, right? Don't assume that people are going to follow the right steps and get what they need when they sign up to attend your events online. Don't leave the invitation process that you have gone through, this process of, of getting right, up to chance. Make sure that you are present to be with them step by step through the process, right? So walk them through registration where you can. Now, following through, this is super important. You can't just make a bunch of posts and hope people show up, right? But also, once people RSVP, this is where there, like, a huge opportunity takes place, and most of us miss the boat here. First, when they RSVP, as quickly as possible. And if you're using Get Oil and you follow the trainings prior to this one, then you know that you can actually have email or text campaigns that go out to them immediately when they RSVP, right? They can apply immediately when they say, yes, I'm going. But you want to take that a step further and actually reach out to them personally. Have that automated message, but listen, unless you're getting 100 people at a time RSVP-ing for your events, reach out individually to the people who say yes, right, or the people who say maybe. Reach out. Thank them for taking the time to respond, to, to read the page, to, you know, to interact with that, right? Thank them. Ask them a question, like, what kind of things are you interested in learning more about? Or what's the big problem that you're hoping this might solve for you? Ask questions. Be active with them. And then, call to action. Have them extend the invitation to a friend. Do you know anyone else who would benefit from? Do you know anyone else who is struggling with the topic of your event, right? Ask them to invite someone, right? Because you're not trying to get them to promote your business for you. You are trying to get them to extend an invitation to someone who is going to truly benefit from the information that you're going to share. So if they know anyone that shares the same struggles, the same issues, the same problems, of course, they want to invite them to, to your event and to review that information, right? So ask. And then finally, don't forget, in the follow-through, to use a text broadcast where possible. These are reminders that you want to send out 24 hours prior and one to two hours prior as well, to people who have RSVPed. A lot of times, people just, life gets in the way, right? A lot of times, it's not because people don't care, or anything negative to that end. A lot of times, people don't show up, just because they forget, because life is busy, and, and people say yes all the time, and we've kind of come to a place in our culture where, you know, it's okay to RSVP yes and then not show up, right? So be proactive throughout this process. Let them know that you know they said yes, and that you're really looking forward to them being there. Establish that connection one-to-one. And then send out the reminder as a courtesy 24 hours ahead of time. And then, especially if you're doing this online, an hour ahead of time or a couple hours ahead, if this is something that's happening in person, okay? Really important that you do that. Now, what I'm talking about here in this final piece is a text broadcast, not a campaign, okay? So this is something that you would set up as a message that goes out, as opposed to going into a campaign that releases automatically, all right? Now, if you are new here and you don't know about any of the training I have been referencing previously, you also want to go over to getoiling.com/getleads. This is where you can learn to create an online funnel and use all of these similar promotional techniques to get people into it. All right. Now, I do want to show you guys, before we hop over to Q and A, the promotion plan, the event promotion plan checklist that I sent out just prior to our call today. All right. Perfect. Can you guys see this? Okay?
Yep.
Yeah, I can.
I'm sure can.
All right. Fantastic. So you'll see a lot of this is going to be pretty familiar to you guys. Obviously, you've got the event name and the date of your event. Asking yourself who this is for, who's your target audience? You want to fill this out right here. What's the big problem that your event solves? That's your target problem. What's the link to the bigger problem, right? So let's just say, for instance, in keeping with our Kidsense line, our target audience is busy moms who want to use more natural products for their kids, but they're not quite sure exactly how to go about doing that. All right. The link to the bigger problem may be that their kids are suffering with respiratory issues. It may be that, that they've tried a lot of stuff, but they're struggling with trying to figure out what the right things are. You decide what this is, right? This is really kind of based around who you know you personally want to serve. You get to be really specific about this, and you should be, and you should be very intentional about it. Because if you cast too wide a net, you aren't going to connect purposefully and meaningfully with the people that you need to for this to really work well for you. So what's then the big, big problem, right? That could be health issues. It could be any number of things. And then, what are the peripheral problems, right? So for a busy mom who's trying to, you know, go natural with their kids, they could be stressed out. Their kids might have struggle with focusing. There, you name it, right? There's a lot here. And I'm sure everybody who's watching, if you know what the Kidsense line is, you can think of, like, just with each product in that line, what kinds of issues those products can solve. So what are the things that mom is worried about? What are the things that mom is struggling with? And what's the bigger picture that that ties into, the bigger problem that she's trying to solve? And then, what are the peripheral problems? Mom needs recipes. Mom's busy. Mom needs a guide, right? Mom, mom needs a guide to show her the top five ingredients to avoid at, you know, in the personal care aisle at the grocery store, right? Something she can pull up on her phone and say, oh, wait, let me look at that. Oh, wait, 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 what? Nope, not that one, right? And then also, you know, a link at the bottom of that to say, hey, if you want to learn more about how you can totally throw the guides away and just order from a place where you don't have to worry about any of it, click here, right? That's the kind of thing we're looking to do here. So then, once we figured out this part up here, we're going to go into our content creation. So we're going to solve little problems. So this is where we would say, mom doesn't know, you know, which ingredients she needs to avoid at the store. Problem two might be, the kids are bouncing, excuse me, the kids are bouncing off the walls at 3:00 PM while mom is trying to get dinner ready. Here's the diffuser recipe that will, you know, help restore some peace in your house in the afternoons. Problem number three, maybe getting, getting the kids up and moving in the morning. What are your tips and tricks for that, right? So you see where I'm going with that? These are peripheral problems. These aren't always necessarily logically perfectly connected to Kidsense or the Kidsense line. It shouldn't be. It doesn't have to be. It has to be something that matters to this mom that we're talking about here, all right? So what you're going to do with each of these problems is you're going to decide, is this going to be a blog post? Is this going to be a video? Is this going to be a Facebook Live? What is this going to be done as, and then when am I going to release it? See, when you are planning this out, you know, one, two, three weeks ahead of your live event, then what you want to do is plan to, on a daily basis, or on an every-other-day basis, you want to drip out some piece of helpful content that points toward the event, right? And it's not just saying like, hey, event, event, event. No, it's saying, hey, problem solved. You want more of this problem solved? Come to the event. That's the whole idea here. So we're going to list out sort of these mini-problems, these peripheral problems that we're going to solve. List the type of content we're going to create with them, the date that we're going to release them. And the cool thing about this is, if you want to really get this done ahead of time and have a lot of this on autopilot for you, you can schedule these things. You can schedule your blog publication. You can schedule... You can schedule the release of videos on YouTube. You can schedule when posts go live on social media, right? And so you can have that promotional plan in place so that every other day, you've got a fresh new thing that's interesting and relevant to the people that you want to be helping so that they can engage and see that your commitment is not just to get them into a presentation to sell them Young Living, but your commitment is to help them solve a problem. Make sense? Alright. So that's that part, and then we get into syndication. Here's our checklist. We're going to, when we create a blog post, we create a Facebook post. We create a video on any social platform. First, you are going to take the link to that Facebook post or wherever the social post may be. You take the link to that blog post or that video, and you go to your email and text subscriber base. You send them an email and say, hey, I just created this thing. It's going to help you solve this problem. Here it is. Right, and you could even add it. And oh, by the way, I've got an event coming up. If you love what you see here, you're going to love this event. Here's a registration link. Email it out to the people that you're already connected to. If you've ever wondered what kind of stuff you can send to the people who jumped onto your email list at trade shows, this is the stuff, right? What do you send out to the people who have opted into your campaigns already, who have opted into landing pages and things that you have put out there on the web already? This is the stuff you send them. People who have said, I want to hear more from you, I want to learn more from you. This is who you send this to, okay? So send it out to your email and text subscribers, and then share this stuff on social media, okay? So if you made a post on your blog, share that on your Facebook, right? Share that widely, share it in your email, share it on Facebook, share it wherever you are online, and ask people, especially when you're on social media and you're sharing in like a blog or a video that you've made, ask the people that you're connected to to share it for you with friends that it might help. So if you know a mom that would love this recipe, share this with them so that she can get that peace in the afternoon, right? Then, you want to ask professionals and entities in your community, we've talked about this already, online and offline, who have trust and relationship developed with your target audience, right? So who is serving these moms who want to be more holistically oriented in your community? Or who are you connected to online who has that audience as well? Who can you go to? And if you have not just promotional content, but value problem solving content on your site and on your profiles, then it's going to be very easy for that professional who serves that audience to say, oh yeah, this would actually be very helpful to the people that I work with, so it's good for me to help them, and it helps you, and you have that new partnership there where they can share your blog posts. Maybe you can even do a guest blog post. If they have a website and they blog as well, you could be a guest blogger for them. And again, in the service of promoting your event. So ask those questions, get out in your community, solve some problems that are on the periphery of the problem that you want to solve with your live event. And then take that out to people who are already serving that community, who could help you get in front of their audience so that you both can serve that community better, alright? And then you want to get yourself out there, initiate those online and offline conversations that lead to you sharing those blog post videos and so on. And then make those direct calls, those direct invites. Don't be passive about this process. You are inviting to share Young Living at the end of the day. The means by which you are inviting to share Young Living is by speaking someone else's language and talking to them, not about Young Living first, but about the problem that you can help them solve. And then, of course, be proactive throughout the process, walking people through getting started, following up with them with a thank you, a question, and a call to action to bring a friend. And then, of course, send out those text broadcasts once people are registered to make sure that they don't forget. Alright, so you should have this in your email right now. You will see a link to download this below this video as a recording. And then, of course, stay tuned. We will be putting together an entire course where you take all of these guides and go step by step by step through the process of this from the conception of the event all the way through to the promotion. Alright, so I'm going to stop my share here, and we can start taking some questions. Do we have any come in as I was going on and on?
Yeah, let's see here. You might have touched on this, and Gwyn had asked, can you walk through this pages if you're doing a one-on-one type class? And then Gwen had asked, the mini problems should be addressed with my oil products though, right? For someone to, for someone to see the blog post on my GetOiling account, they have to register? Blogs might be different, I don't know if you want to?
Okay, okay, so a couple of things. Where you're solving those mini problems, you don't necessarily have to solve those with Young Living products directly. You know, this, this could be, it could be any number of things. This is where you really want to kind of consider when you are putting yourself out there as sort of an agent of, you know, distributor of this company. Whose lives do you most want to impact right now? Obviously, we know that you can take Young Living products and impact basically any life that's living, right, on the planet. But you want to get really specific so that you solve that so what problem, right? So that people understand what's in it for them. So when you are solving many problems, the point is not to weave in Young Living as many times as possible. The point is to address and solve the problem as directly as possible. And then let them know that, you know, hey, this isn't the full picture. If you want to see it, come over here, right? So it could include Young Living, and there's a problem if it does. So if you want to say, you know, give away a diffuser recipe, you could certainly say, you know, this many drops of this oil, that oil, and so on. And oh, by the way, they're not all created equal. You want to learn more about how this works and about how you can be, you know, remove the question of, you know, of what you're going to purchase, why and how, where, when it comes to your oils by attending this event, right? So that is, that's how I would address that in terms of your blog post. No, you don't have a, there's no gate in front of your blog post. People don't have to opt in to read a blog post. The whole point of blogging and creating prospect facing content, so this would be public videos on a YouTube channel, public videos on a Facebook, or blogs on your GetOiling blog. These are freebies that you put out to the world. This is you paying it forward so as to be able to build trust and credibility with the audience that you really want to serve. And so this would just be public, and it would be free to anyone. And if people really appreciate it and they really like it, they're going to want to come and learn more from you in your classes.
Alright, a couple more questions here. Tess says, what event link do you recommend? I have only been using Facebook.
Okay, so in the training that preceded this one, actually, both of, both of them, the, the training before the one that preceded this one, you'll see the sequence of them. It began as a two-part training. This is now part three, because we're really getting into the promotion. But in part one, we talked about creating the actual event inside of GetOiling. And this is something that you would use in lieu of a Facebook event. Because when people RSVP for things on Facebook, you don't own the ability to reach them as you are promoting this event. When you have people register on your own site, you can text them with broadcasts, you can email them directly, you can call them directly and communicate with them inside of a CRM, right? So you actually are able to track the activity of that contact. Did they click the link to open it, right? Did they see the blog post that I sent them? You don't get that information from Facebook, right? You, you, you get to show up in a place where there's a ton of people hanging out wasting time on Facebook, which is valuable in its own right, but where you want to maximize your efforts. You really want to make sure that you're owning and controlling as much of the process as possible. And so we teach you how to do that in the first part of this training, where you actually set your event up inside of your GetOiling Events Manager, which feeds into your Contact Manager and every other part of the system and all links together. Alright. Rodca asks-
Yeah, okay.
Oh, is that the one you were gonna ask?
Yeah, I was just gonna read that one.
Alright, so Rodca asks, hi, by the way, haven't seen you in a while. Do you think it's necessary to write a few blog posts and create some content first before our first event to build credibility? Or just start where you are if you're completely beginning with class one? So unless you are just, unless you're doing your class tomorrow, write a blog post, right? Go, go through these steps, ask yourself those questions so that as you are trying to get people to show up for this class, you have a better chance of them actually saying yes and showing up. If you're going to do the work, do it as smart as you can. Don't feel like you need to have your blog like totally filled out. This could be your first blog post that you ever make, and it's totally fine. What matters is, is that you're meeting people where they are with relevance that matters to them, that helps them to solve their problems. So, so start with your first blog post or a quick video, whatever, whatever you feel most comfortable with. If you do prefer video, put the, put the video on your GetOiling blog. And, you know, write a few sentences and then share that link out. Because there, again, you have that opportunity to point to the link, you know, that gets them onto the registration. Awesome. Suzanne created her live event for next Tuesday, awesome.
She's got a question in the Q and A here, or sent out a Q and A in the chats. I didn't do the Kidsense presentation as we can't get those products here in Europe. I've scheduled an oils and emotions presentation for next week. Ideally, they should have the feelings kit, bundle of oils, I guess, to actively participate in the class. I don't want to try to sell them this before the event, but they won't be able to follow along without it. Any ideas?
Okay, so obviously, some things are going to be a little harder to explain without the oils in front of you. And in any most ideal, perfect situation, you're going to be face to face with people with oils. But the fact is, is that getting people into a room in this day and age is increasingly difficult. So what we want to do in your, in your instance, is I would sit down and kind of do this pre-work of positioning what it is that you're going to share in a way that, that really reaches them where they are. So if you're dealing with oils and emotions, there are practices around the uses of these oils that you can incorporate into what you're sharing. Obviously, if you are working on sort of a healing emotional journey with these products, and I'm not really sure how you have the class set up as of, as of this moment, there, there could be a case for you to, when someone signs up for this, for you to say, alright, listen, I am going to be walking through this process with the actual oils, so it would be good for you to go ahead and grab this kit right here, because you're going to get the greatest benefit out of this class if you do so. And if you do have this class centered around the use of the oils, which if you are trying to do this in a sort of introduction to and bringing people over into Young Living, it's a little bit more challenging to do it that way because you need to do this far out enough in advance for them to get their kit, unless you're local with slip kits. I would focus online classes more around the problem that's solved as opposed to the application of the oils, if that makes sense. However, and I know that you specifically are an expert in aromatherapy, and there's a lot of people who would come to you because of that. I would, I would lean into the emotional and the psychological side of it a little bit more, and the practice. And do let people know, absolutely, 100%, frankly, ahead of time, you are going to get the most out of this class. If you already have these oils in hand, if you don't have them, get in contact with me. I've got a way for you to get them at 24% off retail. Right? So if, if it is a class that you're going to do online that is very tactile with the oils, be out there about it, and people will respect that. As you're not trying to sell them something, they're interested in something that you know. And you, in your case, Suzanne, you've worked hard to earn the credibility that you have. There is no shame in saying, you're coming to see me. If you want the benefit of seeing me in this context, you need to buy this kit. People will appreciate that and respect that from you. Awesome.
Cool. Diane has a question here. I'd like, I would like to blog, yet I know me, it's easier to do a quick video. I've heard of a way to have my videos recorded and then made into a written blog. Do you know who does this?
Hmm, Fiverr. You want to, you want to make a quick video and you want somebody to, to spin that video, basically transcribe that video into written content that you can put into your blog. Go to Fiverr, F-I-V-E-R dot com. There's plenty of people who do that very, very reasonably. But in, absent that, you don't even need to necessarily have that done. There's, yes, there are some SEO wizards out there and, you know, internet marketing land that will tell you that that's what you need to do with your blogs, but it's not totally necessary, especially with what we're doing. It's really important for everyone here to understand fully that we are working with a fully powered internet marketing system. But the automations of internet marketing on the prospect to customer conversion side do not work with network marketing, do not work with Young Living. This is a person-to-person business. The facets that we are leveraging of internet marketing with this system are the ones that allow us to reach more, to teach more and to build trust at scale. But when it comes time to bring somebody in the door, you're holding their hand one at a time. Because that's the only thing that duplicates in this business. You do still have to go one-on-one with people. And why wouldn't you? It's the most rewarding part of what we do, right? Helping people see real significant lasting change. Alright, so who's got any questions or would like to have a review of their funnel or, you know, get any kind of hands-on help with this process? We're here to help you do that while we are here today. And Suzanne, if you're open to it, can we, can we look at what you've put together? I'm not going to go pull it up if you, if you don't say yes. Oh, awesome, okay. Let's, let's go over to your website. If you want to actually, if there's a specific link, so I don't have to go searching to a landing page or to your event page, go ahead and pop that here. And I'm going to go over and open this up.
Actually, she said, I'm still working on the follow-up stuff, haven't done the landing page yet.
Okay. Let's see, I'm going to go to manage an event, and I do believe, oh, there it is, I found it, okay. Alright, I'm going to share my screen so you guys can see what she's created here. It's quite nice. Okay.
I can see your screen, can you shrink the height of it a little bit? The font is kind of small.
Sure, working on it, there we go.
There we go, looks great.
Alright, perfect, I'm going to zoom in a little bit too. So we've got a pretty picture here. And the time, essential oils and emotions. Alright, so who is ready for a class about emotions? Emotions can be difficult and even scary. It's so much easier to suppress emotions and to recognize, feel and process them. However, the ability to recognize, feel, process and release emotions will enable you to function in a more positive and successful way so you can live free to create the life you deserve. Ooh, I like that. So what I would recommend to you, just in terms of copyrighting Suzanne, is to focus on what you have said right here. Any, this function in a more positive and successful way, so you can, right? Live free to create the life you desire. This is actually going to be a more powerful placement for that in the title, right? So have essential oils and emotions be sort of a subtitle or the context where we're talking about learning how to live free and have the life we desire. That is going to make somebody say, oh, you're teaching that in an event, I want to join that event. Does that make sense? That's the kind of copy that you want to put into the title here. Alright, so, and then she says, we're live 8:00 PM Tuesday, learn more about emotions. This is, again, where we talk about, you know, this is what you're going to learn. Let's get a little bit more specific here about what their, what life is going to be like for them after they have received this information. What is going to be possible for them that is not possible right now, right? Because you're going to teach them something, you're going to share something with them, you're going to unlock a door with them that they're going to be able to access something that they weren't able to before. So start thinking about those things and tell them that that's what they're going to learn, right? Because logic is, we're going to learn about oils and we're going to learn about emotions, but that doesn't really grab us and make us wipe clean our calendar on Tuesday night, right? But learning how we can unlock that door we've been struggling to pick the lock on, drop everything on Tuesday, I'll be there, right? That's what we, we want to be thinking that way and speaking, speaking their language in that way. Alright, so this information will transform your day-to-day life and give you the tools you need to process emotions in a healthy and effective way. It can be used for all ages and are very effective. And then you've got a quote, I would move this higher up. And then you've got a quote. I would move this higher up. Uh, like, so after the title, letting them know this information will do this for you. These tools will work for you no matter who you are, da-da-da, how old you are. All right. Be sure to add my email address to your address book so you don't miss any giveaways. Um, include your email address here so that they know to do that and can copy it. Um, do you have a friend who may benefit from this information? Share this link with them. The class is free. Beautiful. This is, this is very good. I hope, I hope you, um, watched the recording if you didn't write down those things down. So speak to, in the title, speak to the change that they want to see. Speak to the transformation that they are trying to figure out, but they have not been able to figure out yet. And then tell them, this is what's gonna happen here. If you want that, register now. And then you can go into more detail. But you want to, you want to grab, hit the point quickly, call to action quickly. And then if they are more of a green personality and they need to read more and they need to learn more, they can keep reading. Uh, but if, like, you, you want to be able to for, um, not, really not for any particular personality, color type, but just generally speaking for the eight second, um, the eight second time span of, of a human's attention in the modern age. You, you need to grab them as quickly as possible and answer the question, what will this do for me? And why should I take my time to pay attention to this? Awesome. You've done a really great job. And then when you hit register, it pops up just like that. Beautiful. And I would say also, I mean, you can have oils and emotions stay the, you know, the, the same image here. Just make sure that what you're talking about is speaking directly to their problem. Beautiful. You did a great job. So, uh, you haven't done, uh, the rest of the, the funnel for the automation yet, which is fine. Um, definitely look forward to seeing the, the, the work that you do to that end, Suzie. All right. Can you say Gwen asked, if you can walk through this page if you're doing a one-on-one type class? Oh, you're talking about, I assume Gwen with that question, you're talking about the, um, the printout, um, that I sent out. Okay. So if you're doing a one-on-one class, um, you're, you're going to have to point the information in your one-on-one class. You can't just do a standard, you know, one-on-one class with this. Unless you want to frame the one-on-one class, right? So if a one-on-one class, excuse me, is for the majority, and they're not all the same, of course. Um, they, they are going to address at some point the dangers of toxins in the environment, right? The, the dangers of, of toxins in our products. So tailor the messaging around that one-on-one class, adapt it a little bit toward a person who wants a problem solved and then absolutely do not call it a one-on-one class to the, to the prospect. Um, or when you promote it. Um, you know, if you want to call it a one-on-one class, it is, you know, it, it's, it needs to be super specific, right? So, um, you know, cabinet cleaning one-on-one or something, you know? Um, I, I, I would, I would throw out the one-on-one language. Um, mostly because unless it's someone who just loves you and would just show up to a class that you did because they're, they love you, um, it's not enough for them to say, I need that. Right? Just like oils and emotions, Suzie's got a lot of credibility. Suzie is, is certified in aromatherapy and, and people have, have come from all over to learn from her. So she's already got an audience that will just go because Suzie said she's doing a class. But if we want to be even more effective and get outside of our bubble and attract more people, we need to hit that context for them. So for Suzie, it's going to be about learning how to break free. Right? And so she could go to people who are holistic therapists and counselors and coaches and say, you know, I've, I've got this class that I'm teaching that's going to help your clients better harness, you know, the, the power of their emotions so that they can experience, you know, greater freedom and greater control over, you know, the way they interact with the world. And that sounds way more interesting, way more immediately appealing and something that you would absolutely spend an hour or more out of your week to learn, then I'm gonna teach a one-on-one class on essential oils. Because a lot of people think they already know. You remember the bold statement that we were saying, like, why people don't show up? They think they already know what you're gonna talk about and they think they've already got their mind made up about it. So if you address the problem that they have in their words and you tell them you're gonna help them solve it, then they're gonna show up because they want that problem solved. And then they're gonna do what you recommend that they do because they want that problem solved. All right. Fabulous. You guys had great questions today and if nobody has any additional ones, then I reckon we'll get rolling. Wait a minute, do we have, we'll do it next week. Never mind.
Sounds good.
Yep. Awesome. All right. Well, you guys keep it, um, keep them coming. Send us your work that you're doing. We're really excited to see it. And, uh, look for a big surprise announcement from us here in the coming week. We've got some fun things in the works. Oh, um, here's a question from Gwen. Um, is there a way to use Zoom through GetOiling with chat rooms? So you can take the link to a Zoom event that you create in GetOiling and put that link inside of, of, of your chat rooms? For sure.
Yeah, I mean, it kind of depends on chat rooms. I mean, I know there's like, with, within Zoom, there's like breakout rooms or something. So I don't know, you know, if that actually, if, if that's what you mean or if they're, yeah, chat rooms, if it's something else, then. Okay. Yeah, okay. I'm not even sure how you do that on Zoom. I know you can, but, uh, I haven't done, I haven't tried it myself, but there's gotta be some way in the menu or something that allows you to do that. If not, um, yeah, I can look into it, but I'm not sure offhand. I know the feature exists somewhere, but I've never used it, so I don't know how to use it.
Yeah, so we can, we, we can chat with you about that separately. Fantastic. All right. Well, thank you guys. Let's see. I don't think you can stream a Zoom from GetOiling into a Facebook Live, can you? Uh, I don't.
No, that's a webinar feature, not the regular meeting feature. Yeah.
Yeah, what we have with GetOiling are, are Zoom meetings, which are great for coaching calls. They're great for small groups and they're perfectly fine for presentations. Um, you, you get different, you know, numbers of people that you can have on them at different levels of, of your GetOiling membership. Um, but you, I mean, when you have events like that, you want them to be gated to the people who opt in, right? Because when you just put them onto Facebook, anybody could see them. Why would they want to register? Why would they need to register if you're just gonna put it out there and stream it on Facebook? What you can do is like we've done in, in the previous trainings, is take the recording from that Zoom call where you've done the presentation. Um, no matter how many people showed up for it and you, you take that call, you record it and then you upload that video and then you've got a video you can share on Facebook or, you know, a video that's behind a landing page, most ideally, um, that you can use to share Young Living over and over again. Awesome. Okay. Cool. Gwen, you've got lots of great ideas and we are happy to hear them. We're happy that you are using us to play them out. All right.
Awesome. I don't see any other questions.
All right. Off we go then. You guys have a great week and we will see you soon.
Thanks for joining, guys.
See you everyone. Bye.